All those in the course, all those Brian Helm.
Here.
All those Carl Hahn.
Here.
We need to make motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say name.
Need motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say name.
Okay. We got public forum on paying Christmas and Joanne, I think you, she here to speak tonight. That, okay. You're okay?
I'm here on the representative of Chamber of Commerce. Couple of months back, we, uh, propositioned the city to pay for the treasurer's position since the city doesn't have the funds. Um, the reason that we thought this needed to be done is because there needs to be separation of duties within the city. And every audit that I ever seen when I was here in thirty-three years said that you need more people to do more things. And no reflection back on day, I know we've got about time, but the, it's not a separation of duty. To do the treasurer's job, we need the city clerk both. State statute calls for the city to have a city treasurer. I don't know if it has to be, but they also call for us to have a marshal or a chief police, which we don't have here. But, uh, we want to do this. We want to do it as long as is necessary. Since the city can have the funds, we thought we would, uh, support and help the city out. Uh, there's no, there's, we don't want any control over the city. We just want to pay the bill and we could pay it directly every month. So, that's why I was going to clarify that you need a city treasurer. You always had one. When I came here, there was people appointed to that position. In the latter years, we had a, an accounting firm out of Farmington do it. And, uh, I even did it at one time, uh, when, uh, Mr. Martin was the city clerk, Jay was, I did it then. Uh, and I never, I never tried to be the treasurer or clerk both. And I don't recommend anybody else to do it. So, that's, that's all I need to say. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that, Joanne. I appreciate you coming tonight and talking to us about it. It's something that we need to consider and it's something we've thought over several times. Uh, we know that the Chamber of Commerce has been, uh, has influenced us a lot. And this, of course, with the fire department, which is a city responsibility. We've always appreciated those efforts too. You know, we have lost a lot of money and as a matter of fact, if we're not careful, we're going broke very soon. So, um, in consideration of this, we thought that we should try to start working within our budget. So, my statement is, is that Saint Mary's should be able to stand on its own two feet. And in order to do that, we need to tighten our belts and do a few things that we're supposed to do as responsible elected officials. So, outside influence will only belong to progress as far as I'm concerned. Um, and it keeps us overspending and taking money to supplement our shortfalls. It also gives a giver political influence over the city of Saint Mary's elected officials. Um, if we're going to be successful, we should learn to govern for our citizens ourselves. That means working within our income and trying to do the best we can do for our city. As you can see in the proposal made by the, uh, the auditor, if you can't afford it, you can't do it. And in this case, we can afford it. I am concerned about, uh, having influence from an outside entity like the Chamber of Commerce because you're not elected officials. And you could try to sway and opinion for us one way or the other. And I've also heard that, as I've been on the board for the last couple of years. After all, this is what the Chamber of Commerce has done for us. So, having said that, if we can come up with some type of reasonable way where it is a neutral thing, like a fund that's set up in general and it's paid out in some kind of way, I could see it. But I still see a conflict. And I think the conflict is, is that the Chamber of Commerce is not elected. The Chamber of Commerce is not responsible. And the Chamber of Commerce is something we'll have to depend on. Instead of the Chamber of Commerce depending on us. But we have to balance our budget. We have to work within our income. And I suggest that you've already seen some of that happen. We do not have a police department now because we can't afford one. And we need to look at other ways of trying to control our costs. And that's my position as an alderman.
Okay, does anybody else got a stand for you with something to say?
I think we should do it. I appreciate the fact.
Good line.
I got something. I don't understand what you're saying about outside influence. Over the years I've been here, the Chamber's helped us, uh, not one time. And I think where they've ever even tried to influence our board, we are a board, each has a, I mean, a vote. No, they didn't try to influence us. I appreciate the offer and the help. And honestly, I think we should take that up now.
I get you.
Whether it gets later on, we can, maybe you don't have money, we take it over ourselves and they don't have to help.
Right.
That's how I would act.
I hear you. I just want to make a statement because, uh, that's the way it could look. And you know, I've been here before at meetings where I've had the Chamber of Commerce president yell and scream at me as an alderman because I'm not doing exactly what he wants us to do. And has said to me, "Look at what we've done in the past for you. Where did you get your police car? How do you think we've done this?" And so, if you don't call that influence, I don't know what it is.
If not, it's about yelling and you got no sense.
But I've, I've witnessed, it's been recorded. I'm just saying, I want to be cautious about this. And I want to know that going forward, we're not going to have any influence.
Carl, it's your turn.
You can't, I know what you're doing. You can't, uh, I know who you're talking about. You can't do it everybody else by it.
No. And I didn't, I didn't say that we shouldn't make an agreement. But I think if we're going to make an agreement, we have to make it clear that it's an agreement and money goes in our general fund.
You're going to need to talk to him.
I want to welcome it. I want to welcome it. I just want to caution it.
Why do you care if they pay it direct? If they get the bill and they pay it, why does that bother you?
It doesn't bother me at all. The system is being, it just, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's wrong.
You're saying you want their money to go into our account and us pay it.
The treasurer would be, be looking for their payment. The treasurer should be looking for our payment. And so, the money should be routed through the city and not a direct payment, not a direct payment. Besides the fact that we don't have to add one. But I appreciate, I, I don't want you to lose my thought. My thought is I appreciate the effort and the help. I just want to make sure that going forward, that we have some type of clean way of collecting. This is not a tax. It's just not a tax.
I think they should pay it direct. That way it goes where it's supposed to go.
It's what they do.
There is another way that it can go somewhere it's not supposed to. Because we all have seen where money comes out of the general fund that shouldn't come out of there or out of somewhere to go into the general fund.
Carl, let, let Carl.
I just think it's a good thing. I think we should take the opportunity until our budget allows us to take it back over and do it ourselves. I think we should, third, offering to us. I think we should take it and appreciate it.
Do we need to make a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, because that's the next thing on the agenda is, is the contract with the Chamber.
Well, first of all. Can I make the motion and we, uh, have the Chamber to do it however you want to work it?
I don't think that we have a clear agreement yet. How could we do that?
Because it's a contract right here.
Why don't we redo that before we, uh, uh, vote? I mean, let's talk about it.
You didn't read that at all?
No, I just read it. I just read it. So, Joanne, how do you all proceed? How do you, how do you see proceeding with this? We want you to help us.
Well, I just think that it is for the good of the city.
We know that.
I, I don't see how we, we'd be influencing you and pay because number one, excuse me, now I'm going to talk. For years, the Chamber has always helped the city. That is the purpose of the Chamber. It's tried to help the city and bring things. We tried to get development. We got a housing project out there. We're trying to sell more lots. We're going to open a road soon. We do things we think for the good of the city. And I do not think it's harmful to have a treasurer. How could that influence them?
Joanne, nobody's saying it's harmful. We're just saying, how, how are you going to implement this? How do you see it? You're going to hire a treasurer for us?
No.
And you're going to pay them directly?
I'm, I'm trying to argue. I spoke with a gentleman that did your book before I talked to Dave sometime ago about this. And he told me who it was. And I had worked with that firm many times in years past. So, I contacted him and I asked him if I could talk to the gentleman that does it. And asked him if he was more than willing to continue to do it. And he said yes. And he told me, well, the reason we're not doing it now is because the city doesn't have the finances. And they understood that. But he said he would be more than willing to do it. And I asked him what it was. I think it was two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five, yeah, okay. And the members agreed to that, that that was okay. And I just think you need oversight. I'm sorry, but.
We all, we all agree with the appreciation of the board here. We understand that. We want to know what the procedure would be if you're going to do this.
If you hired him to continue to do your books, I think it's a wise thing because it's a.
We, we know that, Joanne, but who's going to hire him? Dave's going to hire him, sir?
You're the board's going to hire. And we're going to pay the bill because we'll have them bill us every month. We will pay the bill. That way it has not entered into your budget at all. Well, we never entered into your budget. You won't have to amend your budget taking part of the trade curve. You wish you would have to do because you don't have it in your budget now. A treasurer, you'd have to amend your budget. So, if that would be, really simple because we've done that a lot of times in the city. The farmers go out and they buy piece of wood that we paid for.
Joanne, I think I understand you clearly now and I would be prepared for it. I just want to make sure that we were clear on how that was going to have to be handled. I appreciate you explaining it. I think that the citizens of Saint Mary's.
We never had anything to do with it, except we would like to see a report.
The citizens of Saint Mary's need to know that too. Need to know it's clarified by you, the Chamber of Congress. And I think you've done that. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I would make a motion.
I've made a motion.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say name.
And I guess we can work on this contract a little bit later on.
If you know, yeah.
Because there's a few things in here about termination and everything. I would have to get that.
We gotta talk about that because this is, I'm just wanting to get some stuff. It's for you to take back to talk to your board about, really.
Sure, yeah, we need to do that.
It'll be your arrangement.
Uh, you know, we're still trying to be the board before with Carl and, uh, Dave.
Yeah, I got something I want to bring up too. That's probably a sore subject, but I'm going to bring it up anyways. I'm going to bring this VTB side-by-side thing up again. We don't have anybody enforcing the ordinance. I know we got ordinances against them down here, but nobody abides by them anyways. I think it could be, it ain't going to bring in a ton of money, but I think if we allow them on our city streets and we had five state to get them on our city streets, just like you in Saint Genevieve, in Saint Genevieve County and Perryville and Perry City down there. It wouldn't be a ton of money, but it'd be something. We got an ordinance and nobody abides by it anyways. If they're going to ride them on the streets, make them pay money to ride them on the streets.
So, what are you proposing? That we, we change the ordinance that we already passed?
I think we should change the ordinance that was already passed and put in the, the rules and regulations, just like the city of Saint Genevieve runs in there.
Mr. Audi, I think that it's up to the citizens of Saint Mary's to be involved in this process. And I'd like to table it until we talk to some of those folks about it. I think the people I've talked to about the side-by-sides are against it. And when we went a few, a year ago to start talking about this, my phone rang and people said they weren't interested. And they'd rather have, so I'm just representing my ward. At this point, I think people would be against it. I'm not saying I would be against it necessarily, but I represent them, not me.
Can I ask why they're so against this?
I think they're interested in the things being off of their property. They don't want them on the side streets. And then there was an issue as we studied it, that, uh, the city of Saint Mary's might be liable for any accidents on our state road that runs through Saint Mary's. That's what I remember. But if those things could have changed. But I'm not against having them. And I'm not against the income that would be made from them. But I think it's, I think if we did something like that that the citizens don't like, that would be not delivering property.
I've never had anybody tell me they don't want it. Everybody that I've talked to wants it.
Fine.
I don't say more here. And the people I talk to, they're going to have a problem. Who are you talking to? It's like.
I'm just talking, I'm just talking to the people that call me. I don't call them. They, they call me. And it's been people outside of my ward too that called me about it. Especially when they came up for that vote, just saying, "Look, we're not for this." I'm not saying that I'm against it. I'm just saying that we have to listen to our citizens. So.
I think a lot of them don't understand. Now, I, I do a lot of side-by-side riding in the summertime with very large groups. And we're not looking to tear nothing up. We don't ever tear nothing up. We ride from point A to point B. And it's, that's no different than getting in a car. The things are no different than getting in a car.
Well, and look at all the organized rides that go from Saint Genevieve to Perryville.
Exactly.
And they go around us. That's money that they could be spending in town. They stop at the gas station. They stop at the bar. That's money that can come into town.
Is this something we can get a vote for, 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 from the citizens of Saint Mary's? Is it too late to get something like that done?
I've got till January twenty-eighth to turn in my stuff to the, to the county, you know, for the elections. But I'd have to put together an ordinance and we have to pass it before then. We got two weeks window to do that.
Sounds like Mr. Audi wants to do it and I'm not against it. I just think that we should.
I just think we're, we're at a point, we have got to look in any, like I said, it's not going to be a substantial amount of money, but we've got to bring in any kind of money we can. And I can guarantee you whether it passes or not, people are going to ride them through. Because they do. If they're going to ride them through, they can get stickers. Then that's a little bit of money in our.
And there's people that will buy them from Saint Genevieve and Perryville so they can.
I buy them every year for both. And like I told David, I haven't been to Saint Jim once in my life, but I buy them.
Because you might.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yes.
What difference does that make? We have to buy them. We don't want to cause a city sticker. And that's, we use the streets and everything the same as up side-by-side.
Get that to Lulu right. Yeah. I mean, I didn't know this was going to come up, whether you believe it or not. I didn't. But I've always been for them. I'm not going to lie to nobody. Because I thought they would have brought good money to the city of Saint Mary's.
Glory to you. Gentleman back there in the back has something else.
Yeah. My name's Paul Franklin. I live here in Saint Mary's. Now, you folks talked about Saint Genevieve and Perryville, correct?
Yes, sir.
How many cops does Saint Genevieve have?
The city?
Yeah.
Several.
Okay, how about Perryville? Anybody know how many Perryville's got? How many cops Saint Mary's got? We cannot enforce it. They're going to run wild. Since, since the, we've lost our chief of police. He was laid off. In my neighborhood alone, was seven. Now, what's going to happen is you can't enforce it. So, let them run wildly. And what's going to happen is they're going to go, and I've seen this happen, going through people's property and run stop signs, whether it's not such a thing as a stop sign. So, you people might want to think about this a little bit.
They're already doing it. If they're going to do it, they're already doing it.
Then why don't we get a cop to stop it?
Can you pay for a cop? We can't.
No, I can't. I cannot pay for a cop. But I do know one thing, that we did have people coming in here that was doing cop work. Now, what happened with that?
Bob Zilgery.
So, I think you're a concerned citizen like I'm talking about, sir. And I appreciate your input here. But we are trying to discuss it right now and that's why we want to have an open discussion. I think Mr. Audi brought up something that people have talked to him about. I've certainly heard people say that they don't want them. And I don't, and I've heard people say they do want them. All I know is it's, it's a hot issue. And I think if we're, if we're, if we're going to do it, that we should have our citizens approve it and that we shouldn't be the ones. Because once it's let loose, it's let loose.
It should be put to a vote to the people. You're absolutely right.
I bet you it's a vote.
Once again, a lot of money coming in.
That's making a lot of money.
If it would pass.
Well, yeah, wherever way it goes, it should be up to the people of the town.
What do you guys think about putting it on a ballot?
I'm fine with it.
I think that's easy enough. If we just go ahead and get the ordinance.
That's what I just said to him. It don't cost us, cost us nothing. We have to get our ordinance promoted up.
Right. The only way it would cost us is if we had all uncontested races and we had, had an election just for this, basically.
We don't though.
I'm sure we'd have a contested race though.
Well, I'm sure we are too.
And I already got an ordinance written up because this came up before.
Right.
Uh, but it didn't pass.
Okay.
But we got to have a meeting before the twenty-first.
And get it on there.
Yeah, so we'll get together and pick a time and time to do that.
No, no, right. Paul, does that make you feel better?
Well, sure, mayor.
Good. Glad to hear. Okay. Want to do that for now?
Uh, the audit.
Hmm, okay, I'm a little confused. Party's going credit card, draft audit.
Yeah.
The draft audit. Can you favor decide your thing?
It's better than the first version. Right, Dave, it's not unlike the versions of the past. Except we have a fire department in here.
Right.
Did y'all all get a copy of the others from there?
Yeah.
Is this something you wanted to read, make public or?
I just need you guys to approve the draft so they can take the word draft off of it and get us copies and finalize it, send it to the state.
Did you have any questions about anything on here this last draft?
No, I would go back and forth with it for.
I'm ready for a watch.
Wow, yeah.
I think their assessment about being open and, uh, in the sunshine about things should be, and I make a motion to, to approve it.
I second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say name.
Okay, yes, now we got the, what, party's going credit card?
Frankie, who's wanting to get an account at Conoco?
What we just wanted to do in there is, is the board, uh, Conoco sells, uh, ethanol-free gas. And we buy true fuel now as, when we go to, uh, like, uh, truck supply, I've got to, uh, and we got to buy the pre-mix already for the chainsaws and then regular gas for like the small engine, like, uh, the generators, um, our excation tools and everything. And we got told by Saint Jim Fire Department that they got an account to get ethanol-free gas. And, and, uh, basically, Conoco's, I know does sell it. Uh, they, uh, high, they sell it now, if I'm not mistaken, but it was Conoco first, that was the one that had it. Basically, what it is, ethanol-free, they got no alcohol in it. Because what was going on is we was having to take our excation tool and get them worked on, chainsaws worked on, because fuel lines getting made up and carburetors getting made up via the fuel. So, basically, what we just wanted to do with getting this car is it was just going to be basically used for when we need ethanol-free gas. And, uh, forty-one, we got told with forty-one now that it's better to run ninety-three octane instead of eight-seven in it because, um, uh, it's actually tearing the carburetor up in that truck because of the model of the truck. So, basically, what we wanted to do is only use that car to get our fuel for our small engines and our chainsaw mix and to fill up forty-one when we need it, um, into that truck. The rest of the trucks and stuff, they can get filled up at, well, the old gas station up here or Casey's. It's just the maintenance on the chainsaw and stuff, the working on the small engines, it's costly when you have to sit there and replace carburetors all the time on, you know, because basically what this ethanol-free gas does is basically, it don't sit in the machine and sit there and eat the gas lines and stuff. Basically, it helps the engine run better and everything. Unlike the alcohol mix, turn around and we buy up the gas station every day. Um, it basically heats up the carburetor itself. And here, we're having to take our machinery out to Fair Val Door or something to get it worked on because, um, it, because of the gas. So, that's the only reason why we want to do that. So.
Sounds like a no-brainer. So, you reached, what do you buy this at?
Uh, it's at Conoco. It's for weed eaters and everything. And if you guys want to, as part of the city, I'm going to tell you right now, it's better on weed eaters and the lawnmower and stuff, the small engine. Because the thing about it is, is, I mean, you don't have to use it every time if it's in a tight pinch. But it's good to have it because you run the mower constantly every summer. But like at the end of the year, it's good to run that in it for the last couple of months. That way it turns around and cleans the alcohol and deposits out of the engine. So, basically, if you want, you can get a car for just a fire car, or you can get a car to run the whole city with it. And when I need it, I can just ask Dave for, you know, when we need to go get gas. Because what we do is fill up five gallon cans and bring it back to the firehouse using our equipment. So.
Okay, that's to you guys.
I don't see that there should be any conflict with that, especially if you're going to be able to keep some of that gas there in a five gallon can and not run back and forth all the time.
Yeah.
Make a motion to go ahead and approve this?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say name.
You gotta talk again, Frankie. The sewer project. The sewer project.
The gravity sewer company on conversion, have you been bothered about that?
It is. See a sucker down there.
Huh?
Come on, I, you're over the sewer. You want me to explain it?
I haven't even talked to him about it.
All right.
It threw me for a lift too. So, anyways, what was going on is a couple of years ago here, actually it was last year, here before or whatever, Dave and I went to, um, Missouri Regional Planning because, uh, the state, uh, the regional planning actually gets money, uh, it's like a grant. Basically, what they do is, um, uh, they help to develop, you know, uh, upgrade projects and stuff of sewer and water and stuff like that. Um, basically, what we was trying to do, and I don't remember the figures of what prices wore to do it in phases. Um, we was trying to actually get lift stations put into the town and all gravity fed into, you know, except for the lower part of town, in the town down here where the deckets live and stuff. Because it, we, we still have to pull up to get into, but anybody else, we can go gravity fed, just like the, um, subdivision. What they'd have to do out here, since it's a flood plain, they'd have to build, like Saint Jim's got, they'd have to build the towers up above flood stage. You have your lifts, you know, your lift pumps in there to turn around and pull, you know, everything down to the sewer plant. But everybody would be having eight-inch, uh, eight-inch, um, sewer mains running from the street, you know, and their feed lines from their house, you know, their inlet will go into that, run down, and catch it, you know. And I think we figured it out. We were going to have to have three or four of them, I think it was, reformer of these lift station houses. So, um, that's what we was kind of looking into. And Dave went just to the meeting, I think, on that. So, we'll take twenty on what he knows about that part.
Yeah, we, we turned this in first under like emergency management. They shot it down and said, "No, this isn't emergency. This goes underwater, wastewater." They go after them. Michael Harper of USDA came back and on the back you can see the numbers, just like three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Michael Harper said, "Well, you know, USDA can only pay, you know, like a small portion of this. The city would be on the hook for the rest of it, which would be like three hundred thousand dollars." And it's like, and he said, "We don't have that kind of money. I'm not going to approve this thing." He called me two weeks ago and said, "Hey, I think I might be able to get some money out of community development block rates." You know, uh, like three hundred thousand dollars out of them. USDA would kick in like twenty-two thousand five hundred and we would only have to come up with, um, like seventy-five hundred dollars. And he said we have a couple of years to, to come up with that money. Now, he doesn't, he doesn't have a firm commitment from community block committee, but he's working with Martin Gage at Seale Regional Planning, you know, to see if, if they will in fact do this for us, you know, if, if you guys want to go for it.
Because basically what will happen is all the grinder systems, except for the lower side of the rail tracks down here, all the grinder systems will be gone. And you only have, you know, four lift houses with two pumps each in it. So, you are going to save the cost on grinder repairs, plumbing repairs to the grinder pumps and turnaround and electricity. Now, I mean, it's going to, it's going to.
I'm sure that, that's why the subdivision did that when it was put in, because we didn't have to have the grinders, right? It really does make a great deal of sense. And, uh, the thing is, is writing the grant, the details involved to satisfy everybody. Is that, is that a huge job?
Um, actually, Michael Harper's talking with, uh, regional planning and, and Martin Gage is the one that wrote our original proposal. Missouri Engineering came up with the, actually the numbers and the costs and all that stuff. So, the work's already been done. I just need, and, and we're not voiding on the project. If you want to continue going down the road, you know, yeah.
Yes. I'm looking at the list stuff there they got. And they got a price there. Uh, lift stations, one, thirty-five thousand dollars. We only going to have one lift station or what?
Well, there's area one lift station and then there's area two lift station.
They had it set up hot in like four different phases. That's the way they had it set up. Like they would do one phase and then they go to the next and then the next. Because I think it was going to cost for one of the phases. And then the next. Because I think it was gonna cost for one of the phases, it was more than what the other three phases were gonna cost. More.
Oh, yeah.
Feeding of limes, so.
There's like area one, area two, and then there's like an area three. When area three costs like a million dollars or something. So they're like, well, we can't do three, but I'm like, what? But areas one and two are, are doable. And we can get like three fifty five dollars for this stuff, like ten grand at the tops.
You know, it's, this is the most remarkable thing I've seen since I've been, uh, working with the city of St. Mary, that something like this would come along and the job would be so involved. And I appreciate that. It's, uh, this whole grinder issues makes me nervous. You know, we're always going down, we're always getting more, we're always working on this. Uh, captain with a merry clip manner. Uh, if we had this system, we wouldn't have to worry about those types of things, like your.
Well, basically we would still have to worry about, you know, the lift pumps. I mean, if one of them went down, we still have to pull it, work on it or have it worked on. But you ain't gonna have to shake your, and deal with hundreds of starter kits, hundreds of floats, hundreds of grinder pumps, you know. And the ways these pumps will be set up is they, I think they're Piranhas, the way we talked whenever I was talking with St. Gene on theirs. Uh, they had Piranhas and then whatever they're putting in now, I can't remember in their housings. But they're, actually, they're over five fourth pumps. I mean, they're gonna push some water, you know, some wastewater and stuff.
Could you explain to us how it's working with the subdivision now? As far as that.
Oh, with the subdivision and everything, it works great. I mean, whenever, you know, working on grinders and dealing with that gravity fed up there, I, I one hundred percent would do gravity fed. Because, you know, uh, the only thing we gotta work on up there and knock on wood, we hardly ever get called out for up there for the lift stations. The only one that's really got us puzzled right now is on the lift station, and that's lift station one over by the old Sabre Line building. Because there's not a whole lot of flow going into that system because since Sabre Line shut down and Fiji didn't have no operation in there. So we got, we had to lower the, the floats and stuff and that, so it wouldn't go septic on us. Uh, because the only thing that's pulling off that right now is the house behind it, the gas station, and, uh, the antique mall and Doug Loudon back up there and the firehouse. That's the only one that's going down to that system right now. So, I mean, you gotta keep the water churning or you're gonna go septic and then at a certain point it's gonna flow out. So, I mean, we gotta, we kinda keep an eye on it.
So your presentation and your presentation is about continuing to research this and.
Right. Uh, yeah, we're not voting on the proposal. We're just voting on, do you want me to continue talking with these people about? What is possible?
Yeah.
Yes.
Make a motion there?
Make a motion there. Carry on with it.
I agree.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. Thanks.
Okay, are we done now?
Yep.
We're gonna do department report. You're first.
All right. Um, well, we're in good news. FEMA came in today, uh, two representatives to, uh, to fill out two, uh, of our proposal uh, that we put in to have Third Street repaid, you know, resurfaced. Um, and I had all the information, but they already had it because the first guy gave it to them. Uh, so basically they just wanted to see the damage. So Frankie took them out. He had beforehand spray painted where all the damage was, so he showed it and they took pictures. Um, they're not saying no. It sounds pretty optimistic. They're keep moving forward on this. They have any thoughts and forms? They wanted us to say no on everything. I did on everything except hazard mitigation. There was a question about, do you want, you know, FEMA to help put together hazard mitigation and afford this damage, you know, so it doesn't happen in the future. I said, sure, why don't, why don't you see if you can elevate the road to be, which I, that'll do, but, you know, you can't win it again. So, so we got that going on. Uh, now the bad news, um, I got a note of report that the Missouri River Valley, Valley is the second most saturated it has been in a hundred and twenty four years. Um, he almost called Frankie and said, we're going up to like thirty five feet or something. Uh, I'm on level, thirty six and a half coverage of the corner down here. So it's not looking good. Uh, so that's the bad news and that's all I got.
I saw on a report that they feel like that they're gonna have another, uh, not spring flood, but late winter flood, right?
We're gonna have floods every year.
Yeah.
If this, when the river don't drop out to where it's supposed to be at during the winter month, we're gonna keep having floods.
Last year was tough. That road that you're talking about that goes up there behind, on Third Street there, it looks like to me they must have brought some more gravel on that. Cause they've been working on that lately already. It looks tired.
No, it's, I mean, it smoothed out to get the ruts out of it. Or, you know, chuckled out of it.
That helped out a lot last, last night.
Okay, Frankie, I'm sorry, I knew.
Thank you for, uh, I don't think we have to report, report your life, Frankie.
Well, anyways, uh. Well, we had two mutual aid calls for St. Gene, uh, two medical calls. We had one VA accident, uh, one vehicle fire. And then we applied for the community foundation grant, uh, to, uh, get L V H hose, uh, five inch with short fittings for our new truck. Because we found out that our new truck pumps more water than what our hydrants are putting out. And anyways, and there's not enough pressure line in hydrants. So, uh, we tested around it with a four inch or four and a half inch, uh, hose. And we can crank the pressure up then with it. And I mean, it's getting out of the volume of water, it's just the hydrant's the kind of pressure. So hopefully we got a crank call. We get to hear something on that hopefully in a few years. And that's all I had.
Thank you.
Okay, Third Street former.
I, I don't have nothing to be franking.
Street water?
Yep.
Water is sewer, that's right.
All water is sewer.
Uh. I haven't heard.
Sewer plant, uh, we got the rotor fixed down there. Uh, it's up and running, everything running good. Uh, they turned around and did say, they checked our other rotor, the bearings in it, uh, listening to it and checking temperature. Hopefully, knock on wood, it'll be in the future down the road here. But they said that they are getting a little, little sluggish. So I'm gonna turn around and just keep greasing them. So anyway, I mean, we only, we're only able to apply grease, you know, once a month, once every twice a month. Um, because we don't want to overgrease it for a long time.
Is that a high speed bearing? How did that, is that a high speed?
Well, it's a pillow bearing. I mean, I can't really explain how they, I mean, I know how they work.
Right.
Can't explain they actually, how they, how, they're not fast fast, but, um, but the thing about it is, is, uh, we got it up and going. I mean, they said just keep an eye on it. If it starts getting a little wild on us, turn around, you know, see what we can do. Uh, cause I know it wasn't a very good price. I mean, it was not a very cheap price for the last, to get it done, so. Um, samples are coming back good. Stuff, uh, right now I'm dealing with B N R on my electronic B N R. Because we, uh, went to quarterly basis instead of monthly basis, uh, doing the reports. And I'm in contact with them, trying to figure out how to do my I N Is and slug reports. Because, uh, I can't get on the system and just do that now. I gotta go through ropes. And I'm trying to get them to figure it out before the end of this month, so. So anyway, that's all I got to report on that. Water, we're good on water.
Okay, Bourbon Senator.
Let you talk.
You haven't called me. Are we good?
Well, you guys is right. Street for.
I mean, I know we still need to deal with Cedar Street over here because it's caving in now.
Yeah. Well, on the park, on the park side, um, we closed the gates on the park. Uh, we was having issues with, um, uh, people going down there, doing stuff they shouldn't be doing. So we closed the gates. Uh, and plus the other thing, I told, I'm glad we didn't, um, I think it's the best thing to close it because we was having break-ins down there and suspicious vehicles coming around, going down there, so. And then they was doing donuts in the field down there and everything. So I'm gonna head and close your up because just keep coming and stuff. On the street side now, uh, Church Street, uh, wide drive and Papa Street, uh, they got bladed. Got, um, gravel put on them, they needed it. Uh, Third Street down here got bladed, it's got enough gravel. I mean, we're gonna wait till the rain, see what settles out to. If they want to put more gravel on, won't we? Should have, uh, had to replace stop sign at, uh, Church Street. Um, Cedar Street, I mean, to figure out what we're gonna do to that thing sinking again. I don't know if it's because of the spring underneath there and pushing the rope down out there or what. The only best bet I can see on doing on that is actually overlaying the road, you know, because where the war is when you're sitting. I mean, that's the only best thing I can actually say to do is overlay it. I mean, I know we ain't got the funds to totally do that. Cause that's gonna be a lot of money coming up that shoot, so. But that's all I got, I'm taking that.
Okay, I guess we're down to meeting adjourned.
Vote for a meeting adjourned, can I say something?
If you want to.
Well, anyway. Um.
I thought you were wore out, man.
No, I'm not gonna wear out. Uh, since you ended up here, this is the meeting, you know, and stuff. I know I've been here for one fifteen years. Um, the thing about it is, my time is coming to an end of working here. I'm putting in my two weeks a night.
Oh, no.
Uh, I got offered a hecatious job. I can't pass up. I'm, I mean, I'm, uh, the benefits and everything are tremendous. So the thing about it is, I'm, I mean, I love working here. I've been through a lot of administration and doing this. Uh, the thing about it is, I will, you know, whenever I do quit here, you know, in a few weeks period, I am more willing to turn around and keep my license with the city too, to help, um, uh, keep us in compliance with B N R. For having two water and wastewater licenses. The other thing is, I am willing to turn around and keep doing, um, uh, reports and stuff for the wastewater side. You know, uh, kinda just looking out, you know, helping along here and there whenever I can. Um, I mean, I'm not, you know, asking for a paycheck every, every, I'm, uh, every hour I work. But, you know, if you can make like a, maybe a contract up, getting paid a couple hundred dollars a month, you know, for me to help do things like, I know, you know, with the grinder system and stuff, I'm more willing to turn around and still help out with troubleshooting them and stuff. I mean, cause I know, I know it's just a thing to me, me and my wife talk. Uh, you know, I've loved working here for years and I love doing what I do. But turn around, I know the city's going downhill and I'm not being mean about it. But turn around, I don't wanna get stuck in, in a rock in my heart place. So I'd rather just move on and be willing to help out still. I ain't got a problem with helping out. Uh, the other guy, they offered me a heck of benefits and a lot more pay, more pay than what this city can actually get me, so.
Congratulations. And their gain is our, is our loss. And how long have you worked here?
Actually, I think May will be, one, sixteen years.
Oh, good.
Sixteen years, May, May eighteen.
This is sad.
So the thing about it is, I understand, uh, I broke down and told Mike the day two and he, you know, my coworker. And it felt like he lost his brother, you know, I mean, so. Um, the thing about it is, like I said, I'm more willing to turn around and still help with the sewer department, you know, help out with paperwork. Because I know that's a lot of paperwork down there. Um, basically what will happen is, Mike will be the chief operators of both sides of it and I'd be the back. So, I mean, cause they gotta be here on a time basis, not what B N R says. But I'm more willing to keep my license on the line for the city to keep them in compliance. Cause that's number one thing, at B N R, every time they did an inspection, we was out of compliance because of not having a license. So, and, I mean, I still be around on a weekend, Saturday or whatever. I'm not saying I'd like to get paid hourly for it. But, I mean, if the grinder goes down, you can't figure it out, I'll come down and still help troubleshooting. I mean, I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay in the city. I'm gonna stay living here, but.
Must like it a little bit. Still staying in the city. I'll jump too.
I appreciate that, Frankie. I appreciate that, thank you.
So, wherever you guys decide.
I'd stop you out of it.
Huh?
I'd try to stop you out of it.
You can talk me out of it, but like I always said, money talks, both have walls, so.
You're right.
Make a motion too.
Better my family, so you gotta do what's best here, right?
Yeah, you do. Well, good luck, Frankie.
Come on. Good luck, man. Make a motion to.
A second.